All right, here we begin. Tuesday, May 9th. This is the state required hearing on the proposed budget for the 2017-18 school year in the Central School District. And I'll turn the program over to Mr. Vanlonde.
Okay, thank you, Mark. The -- this hearing is state-required to occur during this timeframe. The Board is well aware of the fact that at this stage of the game, the budget has already been adopted for presenting to the public, so there's nothing that can be changed for the budget at this point in time. But since the state requires us to provide this opportunity, then we are doing so. So some of you who are here in the audience tonight and/or who are watching this, will be watching this at home sometime soon, will be somewhat repetitive, except for one aspect of the presentation. Anyway, just to give everybody a historical perspective on the development of this year's budget, the process started back before the holidays in December when -- do you have this up on the --
Yep.
Yeah. When we developed a rollover budget, which is in the budget development process, kind of a very broad overview of where we think the budget process may be going. And that rollover budget resulted in a -- or showed a budget increase of 4.53 percent. I would also caution everybody that for the last five or six years, we've been dealing with two figures, a budget increase, but as it's become much more important, the tax levy increase as a result of the state's tax levy cap legislation. There once was a time when nobody even talked about the tax levy. It was all about the budget increase, and that's what drove whether you were on a contingency budget or whatever. So that dynamic has changed as a result of the legislation. After the rollover budget, we've gone through a series of at least four different draft, budget drafts, as figures have been firmed up, either in terms of increases that we were not anticipating or decreases that we were not anticipating. We've gone through that process. The first draft budget showed an increase of 4.62 percent, which is actually a little higher than our rollover budget. And we continued through various iterations of the budget development process, mostly decreases at that stage of the game. We were next looking at a budget increase of 3.26 percent, which drove a tax levy increase of 4.43 percent. It'd probably also be helpful to remind everybody that our tax levy limit for the 2017-18 school year, which is derived from a formula set by the state of New York, was a two -- is a 2.18 percent tax levy limit. We proceeded through the next draft, which featured a budget increase of 3.16 percent, a tax levy increase of 4.31 percent. And then a little later on to the next draft, which featured a budget increase of 2.31 percent, a tax levy increase of 3.0 percent. And then towards the end of the process, after an extensive discussion of next steps, and actually the last step, because that's where we were required to adopt a budget to present to the registered voters of the district, we wound up with a budget increase of 3.07 percent, which drove a tax -- which would drive a tax levy of 3.88 percent, which is, as we're all aware, above the tax levy limit percentage of 2.18 percent. So that's kind of a Reader's Digest version of the last several months of budget development activity here at the Board. The next thing I'd like to take a few minutes looking at, because we're required by law to provide publicly a version of the budget, is a budget in what's called the three-part format. For some reason, the state of New York, for many years, has required school districts to provide a display of the budget in a way that's different from the way we're required to process our budget throughout the year, to report our budget to the state. So with their infinite wisdom, they require us to present the budget at this point in the process in what's called a three-part budget. And out on the table there, and I'm not sure if you have it up behind me, Tom.
Yep.
I should get a mirror like this. The state requires us to rejigger the budget into three parts. The administrative budget, which features all of the administrative costs and related costs. Part two, which is the program budget, which focuses on instructional costs and support costs for the instructional budget and services. And then finally, the third part, which is the capital budget, which focuses on the operation/maintenance of the plant, the physical plant, as well as other related areas like employee benefits for people related to that function of the district, and as well as debt service. So as you can see from the one-page summary of the three-part budget, although the total budget increase will be -- would be a 3.07 percent increase, the administrative budget, when you split it out, would drive a 2.62 percent increase. The program budget would drive a 4.02 percent increase, and the capital budget would drive a 1.54 percent decrease. Typically, we like to see, in terms of increases, we like to see the largest percentage of the increase be in the program portion of the budget. That's where the rubber meets the road in terms of our providing services and programs to students. That's also where the largest portion of our employee costs are centered, is around the program budget. And again, if I didn't mention already, each of the various three parts of the budget includes employee benefits for those employees who work within that portion of the budget. So, you know, part one has -- includes employee benefits for the administrative staff and the staff that support the administrative function, clerical, et cetera. The program budget includes employee benefits for the entire teaching staff and the other non-instructional staff who support the program function. And then under the capital budget, the employee benefits for those employees, custodians, maintenance workers, et cetera. The -- let's see, what else do we want to put up? Tom, do you want to put up the school district budget notice? Maybe that would be a good place to go to at this point.
It's up there.
Okay, well, again. And perhaps you'd like to point out some of the important aspects of this. This is also -- the school district budget notice is also included on page two of the budget brochures that we have copies of here, and that should start hitting the homes and mailboxes and post office boxes, at least in Rhinebeck tomorrow, because they're already at the post offices. They were delivered to post offices this afternoon with the expectation that they'll go to the various homes and post office boxes tomorrow, which is within the window that we're required to provide this school district budget notice to the members of our community. So, Tom, you don't have to read through the whole chart, but maybe want to --
No, not going to do that at all.
-- point out a few salient points of that.
So a couple of things to point out is we were -- got a 3.07 percent budget-to-budget increase. The change in the CPI is 1.26, much higher than it was the year before, if it was 0.12, but below the 2 percent you would hope to see, but it's 1.26. The reason why we got above 2 is the growth factor in our school district here. So we've seen plenty of property growth. That's not assessment growth. That's property growth, new properties, additions, new buildings and the such. But this is your tax cap formula. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but at the bottom here, we came out with a negative, a negative 456,780, and that indicates a 60 percent voter approval is required to pass. So, and then this is a breakdown between what Joe had said before, administrative program and capital. But the thing I want to make sure everybody understands, in case it's in the paper or people misunderstand it, is there's a third column up here for contingency budget, okay? This contingency budget doesn't come into effect for a little while, and it is up to the Board with, you know, hopefully we'll have the approval of the budget next Tuesday, and we won't need to worry about it. But if the budget does go down, you don't go to contingency immediately. You can if you want to. I highly recommend against it, but I just want you to make sure. Some people read it and says, "Oh, if the budget goes down, you just go to the contingency budget." That is not correct. It will be up to the Board to decide what it wants to do next. You can put up with the next budget, which would be the third Tuesday in June. Basically, you could do anything you want to. You can even increase it from where it is now. Wouldn't recommend that. Go down to the, what is our tax levy limit, which is 2.18 percent, okay? So that would require us to reduce the budget by 456,078 to bring us down to the tax cap. Or you can go to any number below that, above it, it's up to you. But if you go above that number and it gets voted down again, you have to go back to the tax levying of the prior year, which basically brings a negative budget to us, which would decrease our district by over a million dollars.
Can I ask if one were to go to a second vote in June, regardless of the amount, right? If there was a change made, and as you pointed out, it's up to the Board to decide what would be best proposed to voters, would any figure require a 60 percent vote at that point?
If you were above the tax cap number.
But if you then were at the tax cap number or below, you would only --
You would need 50 plus one. Correct. Yes, Lisa?
Can you just briefly explain why the contingency budget would be below this school year's budget with the same levy?
I'll show you that.
Yes.
I actually show this on another slide here, because it's important to understand that, because there is a bit of an issue, and it does go to our revenue side. And if we look here, here's our property taxes up here. This is what we collected this year, $26,869,359. That's the number we have to go back to. But if we take a look at our other numbers here, this difference here, the 939, oh, it's a pile, it's net itself out. Insurance recoveries, I added $25,000. Subtracted $10,000 out of the refunds of Boasys Aid. They're planning to use, they're not, they want to keep some of their rebate so they can do professional development with their team. That's one thing that's been lacking from Boasys since the tax cap, is professional development. So they are asking to withhold a little bit of that money. So I'm taking $10,000 out of there. I'm hoping it's much less than that. But this is where we start to get it, is right down here at the bottom. We reduced our inter-fund transfers by 20,000. We reduced our appropriate fund balance by 100,000. We increased the workers' comp by 30,000, but that's a negative 90,000 on the revenue side. That's what's driving the negative to the other side.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, this is not, this is not a pure mathematical function of going back to the levy from this year. It is also a set of choices that the administration has made to make alterations
Correct.
-- in the budget that would still bring us to or below the budget of the previous year, of budget of this year.
Correct. It would go below.
Right.
Yes, correct. Now, it could be changed. You could take and say, "Okay, well, we're going to go back to the appropriate fund balance of 150, or 1,150." Well, we'd go to a positive then, because we changed the revenue side. But it's the tax that can't change.
Right.
So that number you saw over here for this is negative. It could end up being something different, but isn't it going to be too widely different than what it is?
Understood.
Because there's no new revenue sources out there.
Yep.
Maybe if the state all of a sudden came down and gave us some more money. Oh, yeah, we could apply that towards it, but yes, that's what a second defeated budget would mean. Or if the Board decided to go from, to a contingency budget without putting the vote back up.
Understood.
Recommend against it, but it is your wish to do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions along that line? One thing I do want to remind everybody, too, is in this particular budget, we have reduced the overall staff by about 2.4 people. One of them is through just attrition at the elementary school with four outgoing fifth grade classes and three incoming kindergartens. It was a loss, a net of minus one there. Who's also decided that a teaching assistant who retired this past year was not going to be replaced. So that's another negative there. And then we had about a 2.4 loss. We have a graduating student from, who's currently at CTI, and that, those services are no longer required. So we have a net decrease.
A teaching assistant down there, right?
Yes, yes, correct, correct.
A part-time.
Right, part-time, lowest seniority, all that stuff, too.
At CTI.
At CTI. And throughout the district, too.
We have to provide the student.
We have to.
We have to provide the teacher assistant for that student. So he is our employee, but now that that student is done with CTI, we take him out of our budget. He's not a Boasys employee. He's a Rhinebeck employee.
Yes, correct. This up here behind you is those possible reductions to the budget, okay? So I just want you to see them, okay, to remind you. These are not in any type of order. They're just ordered non-instructional, instructional. They have not been, you know, they haven't been determined rankings whatsoever. That has not been done, because we're hoping we don't have to do that. But if we have to, we'll need to look at it. So remember, we had to do 486,000. Now, if I want to go back, you see this is only 372. So I do want to show you where the monies I would first come from, and that's on the change document that Joe went over earlier, is these numbers right here. Based on your directions to me last time when we exceeded the cap, I put basically $245,000 into the budget in places in which we control, for the most part, that it's not going to, we sign up for Boasys services, the central office and that, tuition and that. So these would be the first things that come out. Would be my recommendation. And then it's a matter of then going back over to, you know, to take a, look at this list, or it could other, you know, we could look at other possibilities, too. But just to give you an idea of what a defeated budget would mean for us over the next couple of weeks. I don't know the specifics specifically as to when you would need to adopt a new budget. So if there's a budget defeat, it's got to be, a new budget needs to be adopted, has to get to the paper, ballots have to be made. And I don't know about, you know, getting some type of material out to the community. I would not be even coming close to recommending an eight-page thing like that. It may just be if you open it up to the first, if you open up your resource there, and if it opened up, the only thing that we have to send out is on the left-hand side, and that's that budget notice. That's the only thing that's required. So, I mean, it could just be a postcard of that sort, or we could look to do a two-page in-house, maybe. Just quickly fold it, get it out of here. Because getting these to the printer, getting them out, it does, it's a process. And, you know, think about it, too, is, you know, going on the third Tuesday in June, those notices have to be out the second Tuesday in June, so it'd be bad for you. It's going to be a quick process if we do have a defeat, so let's hope that that's not the case, but we'll deal with whatever comes our way.
I would just like to make one statement, whether it's the last statement or not. I would like to point out to people who are here, as well as to anybody who may be watching the recording of tonight's meeting, that during the meetings and the budget workshop leading up to the April 20th meeting at which the Board adopted the budget, there was a lot of feedback to the Board about wanting us to consider and to not cut staffing from the budget. And I believe that the decision that the Board made on April 20th would, except for the positions that were cut due to attrition, that we probably would have cut regardless of the budget situation, that this budget does two things. It does not cut those staffing positions that, some of which Tom showed up on the screen. And it also, if passed by the community, it would, I think we all agree, I know Tom does as our business official, that it would, it would position the district in a better place financially going forward. That said, the Board has, at the meeting on the 20th, determined that regardless, we will engage in a, in a process of long-range planning. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. So that will happen regardless, but I think the sentiment of most Board members, anyway, is that we should at least go to our community, make the case, give our community members an opportunity to approve a budget that would maintain programs and services, even though it's in excess of the tax levy cap, and that if the community does that, those would be the potential benefits. And if the community decides not to, then we know we have another step to take. And again, I don't want to jump the gun in terms of deciding for the Board what that would be, but we'll certainly make a recommendation to the Board, should we, should we not have a 60 percent-plus approval rating on this budget? I will be suggesting to the Board that we not go directly to contingency, as Tom has also recommended. But I think it's an opportunity for our community to weigh in on their feelings about maintaining the current staffing or not. That's their choice, and I think we want to put that choice out there, get that feedback from our community, and then we'll be guided accordingly. So I think we're offering this budget up with a great deal of respect for our community and wanting to give them an opportunity to weigh in on that issue, and we will be guided according to their wishes. So that's about all I have to say. Tom, thank you for your --
Thank you, Tom. And thank you.
Is there other questions or comments, or --
First, no other comments. No any motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? And some votes in passes? So we're on a closed public hearing, and I believe we should --
Correct.
-- move on to the agenda. So this is the regular agenda for the regular meeting on the Central School District Board of Education, Tuesday, May 9th. May I motion to approve the minutes of the April 25, 2017 regular meeting, for special reasons?
Second.
Discussion amendments. Closing favor. And the end of the session passes. The opportunity for public comment. Change of notes. Move on to the force of discussion. First item on our agenda is the school district long-range plan.
Okay, so the first thing I would mention is that perhaps fortuitously, we got an announcement about a week or so ago, that the comptroller's office, there's a notice, that was at your place this evening, that the comptroller's office is going to be providing a webinar on Thursday, May 18th, at 10:30 a.m. for New York State's local officials regarding multi-year planning. Now, the comptroller's office is providing this not only to school people, because you'll recall that municipalities are also governed by the tax levy cap limit, although the rules for municipalities are significantly different than the rules for school districts, since municipalities, by and large, don't vote on their budgets. A municipality like a town or a village can decide to exceed the tax cap with their budget by a majority vote of the trustees on the Board. Not so with school boards. We have to get a 60 percent-plus vote of our voting, of our registered voters. So this will be, I don't want to call it generic, but it will be applicable both to school districts, as well as to towns, villages, cities, whatever. And I think, you know, just to read a little bit from the notice from the comptroller, it says, "Long-term planning can improve a local government's overall financial condition by integrating financial, capital, and strategic planning." The Office of the State Comptroller will discuss the key elements of an effective multi-year plan and ways to help identify and manage potential fiscal difficulties." So I'm hopeful that that gives us some good ideas with which to guide our long-range planning process. I'm most eager to hear how the comptroller's office suggests I'm most eager to hear how the comptroller's office suggests that school districts and other municipalities balance the financial planning with, you know, the program planning and services planning, because I think that's where this process will be most effective for us, if we're able to not only put together a dollars and cents plan, but also include how it may or may not impact programs, services, capital improvements, perhaps, whatever. So I think that will be, I think that'd be a good jumpstart to our process, and it happens on May 18th. So, Tom has already registered. Us will, those who, you know, care to participate, will, you know, will do it in the district, you know, in the conference room, the district office, and see where it takes us in terms of expanding that to an actual process on the ground for our, for our school district. I mean, if, you know, if other people have comments or observations to make, you know, I'm just kind of rehashing what I think and hope will happen from our participation in this.
Yeah, I'm interested to see it. We do have a personal meeting at that time, so.
Well, we had talked, given where we're at in terms of the negotiations process, we may want to reschedule that. I think we're meeting, we're meeting a couple of days before that, so there may or may not be a need to have, you know, that personal meeting was set down before we started to engage in our collective bargaining with the teachers' association. So there may not, may or may not be a need for that. If there is a need, we'll reschedule it. I think this is too good for us not to, at least some of us, to partake in that, seeing where it ends.
So, I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for us to begin our work with creating this group, and I'd like to propose, and very much would like to hear from my colleagues, that we perhaps approach this in the way we did the school start time subcommittee, to form a working group that would meet regularly. And I would propose, at least for the time being, that we think about meeting weekly. Because I think if we actually want to really come up with a plan that's going to be substantive and actionable, well enough in advance for the budget planning process next year, we're gonna have to be incredibly lucky. So, and I'd like to volunteer, I would, I wouldn't suggest a weekly meeting unless I was willing to tend to meet weekly, so. That's my proposal.
You're here. I completely agree. I think the school start time format was really great, and we were able to call in all the people we needed when we were ready to ask important and thoughtful questions. I think, you know, the beginning of this process needs to be throwing every crazy idea on the wall and seeing where it leads, so that we can come up with a reasonable course of action moving forward. So, I also would love to sit on the committee, and I would be willing to meet weekly. But I do think that that format allows for more flexibility than the typical committee format that we have.
I agree.
I unfortunately cannot participate on the 18th because I have to be in New York for me, but I'm clearly willing to participate in the committee if I was given that. It could be a good meeting if you're able to join in after that.
Just, so you know, Tom and I were talking about this a little bit earlier. One way or the other, we will make arrangements to record it. Typically, with these kinds of webinars, although it doesn't state so on that little email blurb from the comptroller's office, typically, they make a, they record the webinar and make it available for people to view later. I know they do with most of the school, the school boards' association webinars. But if they are not going to do that, we'll figure out some way to record it, even if we, you know, even if we do it old-school and, you know, put a cassette recorder in the room with a microphone. I mean, one way or another, we want to have it available in case folks like Mark, who may not be able to be there, won't be able to listen to it in real time, but children will be able to listen to the recording. So, so we'll make those arrangements for whomever. And for whomever wants to be there, we've already got it set up. If no one else, Tom will be there, and anybody else who wants to join in, just be there. 10:30 on Thursday, the 18th, two days after our budget vote, so.
Okay. Anything else I'm waiting for then? All right, move on to the county-wide shared services plan ending.
Okay, so there is a bit of a tie-in here, and I provide you with information in your, in your packets. Apparently, as part of the most recent state budget process, someone, I don't know who, and I really don't care who, but somebody up in Albany put in a provision in the state budget that did something similar to what was required of school districts several years ago, only this year, bless him. It apparently applies to municipalities, and it requires municipalities, under the auspices of the county executive, to pull together a group of representatives from county and municipal government to look at potential cost-saving strategies. I don't know that it goes any further than that. There were limits on school districts, when school districts were required to do that several years back. And I let, I let people make their own judgments, but our county executive, Marcus Malinaro, not only reached out to municipal leaders, but also saw fit to reach out to county school district leadership and offer them a place at the table. To be quite honest, I'm not sure how valuable it will be for school people to be at the table, because the discussion, as far as I can tell, won't be about shared services with school districts, although there may be some suggestions that come up. But I think it will be primarily focused on municipalities and the county, county government sharing services. I mean, just as an example of that, there's been a lot of talk for years about, you know, towns and villages, you know, merging in terms, as a way of saving, saving taxpayer money. There have been discussions, more broadly, I'm not just talking about in our area, about fire districts combining to potentially save money, or sewer districts, or water districts. And there's a, there's a, I understand there's a stand of municipal governmental agencies that, there may be possibilities there. Again, I don't want to say there are, because that's not my, my business or my area of expertise. But anyway, to make a long story a little more long-winded, I apologize. Every school district in the county has been invited to have a presence at the table. And as it so happens, our astute business official, I know he didn't see this coming, but he already had, has a pretty full plate of prior commitments on the two days that have been already designated by our county executive for these meetings. In fact, one of them was actually changed, which.
It was the 17th.
Made it even worse for you.
Yeah, I couldn't have done the 17th.
Right, so, so if it is the pleasure of the board, I will attend as a representative of the district, with a fair dose of skepticism as to how useful my presence will be there. But I will attend, if anybody is going to attend from our school district, whether it's me or somebody else, not that I would put that on anybody else. The board needs to adopt the resolution, and you could add this to, to your agenda for later tonight, to designate me as the representative to that group. So unless you tell me, Joe, don't waste your time, forget about it, and if you will, in fact, pass a resolution by maj, a simple resolution by majority vote, naming me as your delegate to this group, I will attend the two meetings that have been set up for that purpose. I will, as a result, should that happen, I will not be able to be at the comptroller's planning webinar, because that's the day of this meeting. So, somebody's gotta stay here, somebody's gotta go there.
Comptroller's 18th, isn't it?
And this.
Right, it got changed to the 18th.
The 18th, that was, it was, the 17th was bad for Tom.
For all school districts, it was bad.
Yeah, it was a big conflict. So it got changed to the 18th, so it's bad for me, but we'll have a recording, Tom will be there, some of you will be there, and you just can't be in two places at once, so. So that's, that's up to you to decide. Should you not appoint me to go, then I wouldn't be able to go.
He'd cry himself to sleep tonight.
I'm getting that.
I would get home.
Joe, one of the big questions I have is, I understand that there's precedent that's been set by towns and villages having conversations about shared services. One area I'm interested to learn about, and perhaps this is not the only way to learn about it, but whether or not the village or the town in a school district can have shared services, if there are models for that, or precedents for that, that we can learn from, it does seem to me it would be a valuable thing, if others agree, we, what is the word, deputize you, or nominate you?
Oh, about deputize.
Designate?
Designate you?
Yeah, I like that designation better. Since you mentioned that, some of you who have been, who have been around for a while on the board know that there was, I know Mark is aware, because he was, he participated with me, there used to be a group in Rhinebeck called the Rhinebeck Collaboration. And in those days, and it wasn't all that long ago, the town supervisor and the village mayor and I, and one member from each of those three groups' boards would meet on a fairly regular basis, like maybe once every six weeks or quarter. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we weren't meeting like every week. But we would meet pretty regularly to discuss issues of mutual concern. And sometimes there were issues of concern between the village and the town, and not so much the school district. And sometimes there were issues between the town and the school district, and not so much the village. And, you know, that kind of, it flexed as the discussions went on. And as, as things sometimes occur, especially in, you know, elected politics, you know, people get unelected, and new people come in, and they're maybe less interested in doing that, or less interested in being in the same room with, with other people, and, you know, those dynamics play out. And I think, without throwing anybody under the bus, the concept just lost traction. People weren't that interested. Everybody involved was too busy, and they couldn't find the time, and so it kind of lapsed into, into nothing. I mean, we haven't met in a number of years. And I will, I will say publicly that a couple of weeks ago, the new village mayor, Gary Bassett, and village trustee, Rick Lewitt, asked to meet with me, and we sat down a couple of weeks ago and had a great conversation, and they raised this issue of intermunicipal cooperation. And I, you know, I jumped all over it and said, "Yeah, we used to do this, it was great, but it really only works if people want to be there." And they were, they were certainly very excited about reviving that concept. And Mayor Bassett agreed to reach out to Supervisor Spinzier, to see if she might be interested. And anyway, to make a long story short, we've set a date for our first meeting, we're meeting, I think, on May 24th. Mark, I believe, is gonna be there, assuming his job allows him to be. And we'll start the conversation, and we'll see where it goes. Now, whether that, whether that actually results in shared services and cost-saving, you know, that's, that's to be, that's to be determined. I mean, we met pretty regularly for several years, back and over years ago. I will say that we had some great discussions and addressed a number of issues that were, that we had in common, but I would be lying to say that we came up with ideas that saved any group much of any money. I mean, not, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but, you know, lots of times, those kinds of, those kinds of cost savings happen when, just as an example, which would not apply to us, when, say, a school district is looking to, to build a bus garage or a bus maintenance facility, and the town is also looking, or the village is looking to build a garage to service their vehicles, and everybody gets together and says, "Hey, if we built one substantially-sized facility, we could service buses, and dump trucks, and snowplows, and we'd save ourselves some money." And, I mean, a number of those things have happened. You're talking about models of that kind of cooperation. The ones I'm most familiar with have had some connection with capital improvements. So, all three municipalities aren't each building a separate freestanding vehicle maintenance facility, you do it all together in one place. So, that's, that particular example's not really on the horizon for a school district, and we don't own buses, so we don't have that need. But that's the kind of thing that sometimes can come out of those kinds of discussions. I would think that anything that would come out of these discussions in terms of cost-sharing would be much more modest. I know at one point, we, the town, I think the town, I'm not sure if we still use that or not, but the town had a gas card program, and do we still do that?
Yeah, we get our gas through them, salts and sand, we get from them.
So, instead of having to do it separately, we benefit from the cost savings. Everybody benefits some. Again, it's not balancing our budget, but it's nothing we should ignore, that, you know, buying in bulk helps every, helps everybody who uses it. And so that was one specific thing that came out of those discussions. Like, hey, you can use our card system. Hey, yeah, great, we'd love to, we'll save everybody some money, that's, that's fine. You know, we have an intermunicipal agreement that even predates the Rhinebeck Collaboration between the town and the school district, where we share access to our facilities. The town runs adult basketball, adult volleyball, just as examples. We don't charge them to use the facility, and we use some town facilities.
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts, for example, for our tennis team. So, you know, that kind of cooperation, it's not really a cost-saving, but it actually just simplified this whole billing process. We used to send bills back and forth between district office and town, all like, you know, like crazy, and it's like, why, where's that kind of doing? So let's just agree to share the facilities, and, so there are possibilities, and I'm sure those things will, will come up as a natural result of the discussions. I mean, already we had a discussion about, again, a longstanding issue in this community, and that is children being able to get to school safely, given the sidewalk situation we talked about, you know, just in that brief meeting with Gary and Rick. we talked about, you know, just in that brief meeting with Gary and Rick, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about, you know, crossing guards, and painting, you know, crosswalks, and, again, we didn't make any decisions to do anything, but we were talking about those kinds of things, so, and, you know, well, we could really use a crosswalk here, because a lot of kids cross, like cross from the deli, cross, you know, that East Market Street, so I suspect that, as opposed to real significant cost sharing, it's more going to be sharing ideas and doing things that benefit the town, the village, and the school district. So we're going to start that up in a couple of weeks, and ride that horse as far as it takes us.
Well, I just think that's excellent, it's really good news, and given that we're launching into this long-term process, really opening up the lines of communication with folks in the town and the village governance, seems, it seems like a really auspicious thing, so.
Thank you, yeah. Diane?
Yeah, I think that's great, and I, you know, I think there's, the difference between now and years ago is that the district is more financial than it was before, so that there might be, you know, even small savings can make a difference.
Yeah, sure.
The question about this meeting with the local.
It's county-wide.
County-wide, is, are there going to be more ideas there, or does it make more sense to just have a meeting with the local people, so that, you know, your time might be more better spent with the village?
Yeah, well, I'm not, believe me, I am not politicking to have you designate me as your representative, however, it, this thing seems to be a short-cycle thing. They have to meet a mandate, basically, they have to meet a state mandate to have this meeting, and to call people together, and while they don't have a requirement to have school people at the meeting, he's, he's being politically astute and casting a broad net, and I get that, and it's two meetings. And quite honestly, if, are we taking this? If meeting one turns, turns out to be a total waste of my time, I may have a conflict with meeting two. If, if it's reasonably worthwhile, I'm glad to go and participate and do what I can, but it's, if I was being asked to attend a twice monthly meeting for the next six months, I would, I would respectfully ask you to tell me not to go. But since it's short-cycle, I'll, you know, I'd be willing to go. I don't hold out much hope that it's going to bear fruit for the Reinbeck Central School District, but, District, but you never know, I, you know, I'll keep it open mind, and we'll be glad to go. It sounds to me from a, a polling of my colleagues in the county, that most school districts are inclined to send someone. If not the superintendent, your school business manager, I imagine there'll be more, and so you owe me one.
My understanding is going to be more, more superintendents than it's going to be business officials.
Well, we'll see, that would be, that would be the good, the right thing to say. Somebody's even, one district's even sending a board member to represent the district, but I'm, I'm glad to go, and I'm glad to go to two meetings, and I really wouldn't admit to more than that.
Thank you.
Tom, Mark?
I appreciate your willingness to go. It does seem to me, just reading through some of this, that, you know, there may be some discussions of energy use, and, you know, maybe, and based on the facilities minutes later that we'll hear, you know, maybe there are ideas about green energy that municipalities, local governments, school districts can all share in, and if we're not at the table, I would hate for school districts to be left out of that discussion, so, thank you.
So you would need to act on that before tonight, though. Because the next meeting is before our next meeting, so. So that's pretty much the long and the short, as I know it, this plan.
So this is more on county-wide shared services plan, we will move on to board meetings, and the work itself, the work of this plan.
Take it away.
So, okay. So, basically, the finance committee met with representatives of M&amp;T Bank, discussed a number of all things that M&amp;T has made available to us, and they involve collateralizing of district deposits, so that our deposits are protected above the FDIC insurance limit, also various fraud protection services, corporate credit cards, and tax collection services. So M&amp;T has offered all those services, no charge to the school district, sort of as a way to maintain our business. So the, I guess the main topic we discussed was tax collection services. They are able to offer the service of a lockbox in Buffalo, where people will mail their tax payments, and they end up on the lockbox and process. Several school districts in the area are already using the service. The school district will still be able to accept payments at the district office, and, you know, for people who still choose to pay in person. And so, you know, the service is a good means for the taxpayer, and also reduces the number of people moving through our buildings at any time during tax season. So the only caveat was that who wanted to implement that service, we'd have to do it relatively soon, because paperwork needs to be processed in order to make that happen, so. Any questions?
So what would the process be, what would we have to do to, to get that moving if we decide to move in that direction? We just decide?
If they're okay, and they fill out the paperwork?
We've already filled out the paperwork, I just haven't signed it yet, waiting to hear if there's any objections here. We've already gone and met with, with M&amp;T, and started filling out the paperwork in anticipation of tonight, but there's no action we have to do, it's, it's the tax collection process, it's just a different way of doing it than what we've done over the past decades, so.
And, just to follow up that, does that require board action?
No, it doesn't require board action, but I don't want to move ahead without near consent.
No, absolutely, but, you know, if, if we get nods all around the table, and, and we think it's the way to go for any number of reasons, then we'd be letting you know, all right, well, we're going to go down the road. If there's an uproar around the boards, no, definitely don't do that, that's a crazy idea, then, you know, we'll, we'll back off and at least talk about it some more. Like Mark mentioned, because the tax collecting season is coming up pretty quickly, I mean, it'll, one way or the other, regarding the budget vote on the beginning of September, we've got to collect taxes, so they need to get set up for us, so we need to do something soon, but if the board says, you know what, hold off until next year, we need more information, then we'll hold off, but, so that's, that's, that's the, I think, the answer here.
Okay, thanks. I'll just tell the, the other members of the board, and Joe and Tom, that the town of Reinbeck uses M&amp;T for the tax collection services, they have for a number of years, they've been very pleased, and, just as you say, it has tremendously reduced the number of people moving in and out of town clerk's office during tax season, and increased efficiency generally in that office.
Sounds good. It seems like a no-brainer, and they're not charging us for it, so it's like, you know, they get to use our money while it's sitting in there, but, you know, there's got to be some skin in the game for them.
I mean, they're, and the other thing, too, just, just to let you know, I mean, if you priced out their services, it's about forty or fifty thousand dollars a year, but they don't charge us anything, just because we've been a customer of theirs for decades and decades, as far as that's concerned, and, you know, it's, they like having us as being one of their customers, we don't really give them too much grief, that's for sure, other than the, the interest rates are low, but I can say that about any bank right now.
Seems like a reasonable path for you.
But people will be mailing it to a P.O. box in Buffalo, not to a P.O. box in Reinbeck.
Yes, they'll go to the bank, or they could bring their bag of quarters in here.
And they can still come here, they can still come here. I mean, the only real big caveat is, is that if you're not an M&amp;T customer, you can't go down there with cash.
To the bank.
To the bank, because the bank is under obligations to know money's coming, actual physical money's coming from, so they don't touch your money unless it's, you're one of their customers. If not, they can come to us here, give us the money, oh yeah, there's people here the first day.
I was a kid when I referenced a, a bag of quarters.
That, that first day, you, you will see at least ten to twenty people coming in with cash.
Wow.
Why doesn't the Patriot Act apply to us then?
I had a cash under my mattress.
Why doesn't the Patriot Act apply to us then?
Because we're not a bank.
We're not a, but it's.
We're not a bank.
Yeah, good point.
Tom, is there the opportunity to put something with the tax bill to let the?
Oh yeah, they have a whole thing that we add to it. There, all the instructions will be on the back, and we'll put a reminder on the front of the envelope, too, they said they would put a special thing on there to let them know that remittance is different this year.
And people, again, people who are just in the habit of coming in here and want to continue to do that, they can, we'll still have Sue McCormick there, but it should cut down on the amount of money we're handling, and we're depositing, and the amount of her life that gets tied up doing that for a couple of months out of every year, so, seems like it's worth it to try it, the experience has been positive of other municipalities and school districts, and we're not like locked into a twenty-year contract or anything, and we try it, and we don't like the way it works, then.
Take it back. All right, any more discussion from the finance committee, or the personnel committee?
So we met with Reinbeck Teacher Association, and got a counterproposal from them, which we discussed, and are going to give, meet with them later this week, and give them a, a counter to their counter.
Okay, I took those minutes. I'm not going to recap them in detail, because they're pretty detailed, but I do encourage people to, to read them, just to keep up with what is actually a pretty interesting process, I think. I do want to highlight a couple of things, though, because they're both items that have been discussed in board meetings, and I think that they're things that the board might want to hear a little bit more discussion of. First of all, on first page of the minutes, there's an item regarding solar power and the potential expansion of the demonstration project that we authorized as part of the capital project. And we had been asked, the, the committee had been asked by members of the board to consider the possibility of expanding solar use as part of the capital project, or otherwise, in light of the anticipated retirement of Indian Point in the next, at some point in the next several years. So we raised that question with Steve Von Schiller, who's the Electrical Services Design Coordinator at Tetra Tech, the architecture firm, that's our consultant on this process, and with other members of the Tetra Tech team. And both Steve and Sheldon Teeter were pretty emphatic in saying that there's no really reliable way to predict what the impact of Indian Point's closing would be on the electricity rates that the district would experience. I mean, I guess we all have a gut feeling that if you close a power plant, the rates are going to rise, but it's still off in the future, we really don't know what rates are going to be like at that time, and so their feeling was it would just be basically guessing, to say how adding additional solar would impact those rates. In addition to that, and I think this is a point that we made during the initial planning process, but was reemphasized during our meeting, the State Education Department will only give aid to a solar project that is ten kilowatts or less. So if it's more than that, we are on our own and paying for it, we will not get any additional state aid, and that is a big cost factor for us, and what we would probably mean is that we'd have less funds to put towards other parts of the project that we've already, if not committed to, then at least said that we want to see happen as part of this project. So the committee's feeling for, about it is that this is not something that the Facilities Committee should be taking any further in context of the capital project, but conceivably it's something to talk about in terms of the long-range planning process, because the Facilities Committee is not at all taking the position that we should not consider more solar, we simply are not, we are simply saying that it doesn't look like it's something that we should try to build into this capital project. But ultimately, it might be something that the district should consider doing as part of a broader plan.
Lees, if I could just jump into you a second?
Yes, certainly.
I, I wanted to make sure that they were, they being our architects, that they were aware of the fact that there may be a time in, maybe the not-too-distant future, or maybe the distant future, where we decide that electricity rates are high enough that the cost goes through the roof, once they bolt down the, you know, the, the plant down, down south of us, and I, I didn't want them to put this demonstration project in, and then if we go back to them five years from now and say, hey, we're ready for, to, to upgrade the capacity of this, have them say, well gee, if you told us you were interested in solar, we'd have located this here instead of here, you know, we put it here because it was only a small thing. I just want them to be thinking that if we go back to them at some time down the road, you know, another capital project, that they're not going to say, oh, now we've got to start over from scratch with you guys. So that's, I just, more an awareness than anything else at this point. I, I think they got the message without us saying, yeah, we want to do it now, we don't want to do it now, we can't afford to do it now, it's not feasible for us to do it now financially, the rates are pretty darn low, and so, that's, I just want to make that.
Yes, and that, that's absolutely.
You know, it's like when we, with the last project, when we had them build the auditorium, so that if at some point down the road, we wanted to build a balcony onto that auditorium, I mean, it, it seems kind of funny now, with declining enrollment and whatnot, but we said to them, you know, build the infrastructure, so if, if the community, a number of years down the road, wants to add another two hundred seats to that auditorium, it's, it's ready to take it, and that's the time to do it, is when you're building it, not to have to tear it apart and retrofit it with another thing. So we're just thinking along those lines, kind of trying to position ourselves for something else in the future.
Yes, okay.
Sorry.
Nope, that's fine. The other item that I wanted to just touch upon is lockers. So as everybody around this table knows, one of the, one of the items that we've been planning to do as part of the capital project is to replace lockers in both buildings. However, there have been a couple of, a couple of snags that have come up in the course of the planning process, the, the most significant of which is that the S E C regulation, S E D, sorry, regulations, require that there be eight feet between the corridor walls with the lockers on both sides of the hall open. So if you're standing in the middle of the hallway, and you've got an open locker on that side, and an open locker on that side, you have to have eight feet between the edges of each side's lockers, and we don't have eight feet, we have less than eight feet. There, we, the, the Tetra Tech folks very logically got in touch with S E D and said, can we get a waiver for this? And they were told, no, you may not have a waiver. So what that means is that the nine-inch lockers that were originally proposed for replacement lockers will not work, because they take up too much space. replacement lockers will not work because they take up too much space. So, for a variety of complicated reasons that I didn't even write down because I couldn't follow them very clearly, it, it seems that the, the way we may come out of this with respect to lockers is to refurbish existing lockers instead of replacing them, but the Tetra Tech folks were hastened to tell us that they had not yet firmly concluded that that is the only way to go and that there were other avenues that they wanted to investigate first before they came back to the committee and either said, yes, we've gotta go to refurbish instead of replace, or, hey, here's a great way to deal with the replacement issue that will, you know, get you what you want configured somewhat differently than you imagined. So, stay tuned on that. Otherwise, you know, it's a very wide-ranging design process and I just have to say personally that I'm very, very impressed with the professionals who have come to speak with the committee and to show us and talk about the planning. I, I feel as though the district is in good hands on this process. I'll end it first.
I'm glad they're gonna still look at the lockers because I remember, right, from being on, it wasn't an issue of there being a problem with the lockers except they weren't figured out. Refurbishing doesn't seem like it will necessarily fix that.
Right.
And I'm assuming they're taking into account our declining enrollment and we won't need as many lockers.
Well, right, although we'll have to advise them on that. They're not going to be tell, giving recommendations to us. So, right, you're right.
I think, you know, the discussions we were having in the committee is that, you know, in order to make wider lockers work, there would have to be some reconfiguration of the placement of the lockers.
That's right.
They were gonna kind of go back to the drawing board, try to look at all this possible scenarios and figure out how it might work. And so, there was more work to be done on that and, you know, we're just bringing up some of this heat on, you know, the next step for lockers.
I mean, they threw out an option, well, put all the lockers on one side of the hallway. Then you don't have the, the space issue, but then you have every single middle school kid in that one space and, you know, you wanna space them out a little bit so it's not a mob scene. So, you know, we looked at that and it's like, yeah, that, putting everything on one wall doesn't seem like, it, it solves the problem of the clearance, but it doesn't solve the problem of, of access to, to the lockers. So, so they're looking at ideas. You know, they haven't closed the door, but we also, we wanted to surface, he, yeah. No pun intended, but we do want to surface the idea that it may come to pass that we don't get new lockers, that they may be refurbished lockers and it only because that'll be the best solution, given the constraints of the physical plan.
So, that's my question, actually. So, the lockers that we currently have, how wide are they? Are they...
Oh, I'd love to be able to court your chat.
I can't remember either.
Nine is what they want.
They might be, yeah. So, do we have the eight-foot clearance now with our lockers or is that a new requirement that we're now...
What we were told is that we're actually split under the regulation as standards right now.
Right.
Well, like grandfathered because...
Right, because they were there before the...
But with the wider lockers means a bigger door, means it reaches further out, you know. It's like...
I think it'd record you in doors.
Yeah, or they could be like, you know, like two, two little...
Of course, that may...
Open in the middle, you know?
That may create a cost issue for, for the district. We'll spend the entire $12 million on door, locker doors.
It's interesting. That is an interesting concept, though.
Locks on the lockers.
Yeah.
Garage doors.
I think that was it for committee.
First one, communications.
Oh.
Oh, communications will be next time.
Okay. Deirdre did the communications minutes.
Are they in here?
Do you wanna, do you want me to look them up?
They were, they were supposed to have made it in there.
I do not see them.
Spoken in, as it were, the last couple of days, but so, we can do that at our next meeting.
And, well, we could sort of brief, this, this is what we worked on. We worked on the resource.
Exactly.
Basically, the reconfiguration of that, that was the sum total of the meeting, you know, trying to get, to break it up a little bit so it wasn't such a sea of text that people may or may not engage with.
And may I just say that you, you guys did a really splendid job on this. You know, I, I mean, I think that the, the most important thing that the district puts out every year to the community is this, and this is an excellent iteration of that publication. So, thank you all.
Well, I, I think really it, our ideas maybe, but it was Steve Jensen and Christine Belcher who did all of the work in redesigning it, and they did a fantastic job.
And one thing I wanna say is Steve did do some research and look at the different kinds of communication that districts do around precisely the situation we find ourselves in this budget cycle and, you know, I, I suspect that many of these districts have communications officers or they, you know, have consultants who do this and truly, we're very fortunate to have people here in the district like Christine, Christine working on this because it's not necessarily a part of what they, they're expecting to do.
They are graphic designers.
All right, we'll move on to the draft summer 2017 board meeting schedule.
Yeah, just briefly, thanks to Mary Ann putting this together. I just put it in the board packet. Obviously, some of you are not going to be on the board for the summer meeting schedule, but I just wanna float it out there, especially those of you who will be returning for the coming year, please start to look at your own schedules. It's, it's most critical with the summer schedules and every year we go through this, this taffy poll trying to get three or maybe four dates that everybody, or most everybody, is available. We're not always successful getting all seven board trustees there, but we try as much as we can. So, look over kind of, and this is the standard second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Look it over. If, if you know now that something doesn't work for you, send me an email and just flag it to me and then we'll, and then once we get our two new trustees on the board, we'll get input from them and we'll put it together. But I just wanted to get it out there. And also, probably, the September through June meetings aren't gonna change too much. I mean, we tried to work around, you know, school vacations and such, so they probably will change. Not that we couldn't if we needed to or wanted to, so just start looking at it, that's what we're doing.
Just mention that we're gonna be out of the country until October 5th, so...
I know where you're gonna be.
So am I.
Okay. All right. Good to know.
Okay.
I won't be here on August 8th, but if we could also try to keep in mind, it would be great to be able to schedule a board workshop for goal setting and also if maybe we could consider a board workshop for long-range planning as a full board to sort of come together around some general ideas, that would be great.
Yes.
He's waving her head.
The 8th is also not for me.
Anything else?
That's why we cancel all the...
Oh, 22nd, we've got 22 seconds.
Okay, so, like I said, we will not make the bed, all seven people there.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Maybe they don't have to be there second and fourth, right?
Yes, if I don't know, I can't...
Well, and you've also got two unknowns this week.
Right, well, we'll get the two new board members into the loop before we finalize this search.
And is there anything that...
If five people were to tell me now, I can't make it on such and such a date, I know right off the bat, I gotta look for something else, so, okay.
Is there any rule that says it has to be a Tuesday? Could it be another day?
Uh, there's no rule, as long as you publicize it adequately.
When it's gonna be.
You know, I think we've tried to stick with Tuesdays because people kinda, kind of, as much as they can, block out Tuesdays. You know, we start moving around and the people in the community, oh, you're always being on Tuesday, now you've decided to be, I mean, if we had to, we would. The really, the only critical date is the first one. Because you have to do the organization meeting no later than I think it's the 15th of July.
Either the 14th or 15th. One of those two days, it's gotta be done by.
We gotta do, we gotta do one meeting early in the month. Everything else can float and, again, I'm not sure this is the year, but some years we've only met three times, just to give ourselves a break from, from what is grueling work. So, we'll see how that works out. Some years, we can't afford to take a two-week block off, so we'll, we'll work it out. Again, I don't wanna get too crazy with this now, I just wanted to put it out there, start checking your calendars, start giving me some feedback, and over the next several weeks, we'll, we'll massage it, we'll, we'll get there. Okay. Thank you.
Good news?
Yeah, I have good news. I got something in the mail yesterday and it is greetings from the New York State School Boards Association, and they would like to recognize Lisa Rosenthal as for participation in New York State School Boards Association Leadership Development Opportunities totaling 150 points. They have four different levels. Level one is at least 75 points, level two, at least 150 points, that's the excellence award. Level three is the mastery award, at least 250 points, and level four is something that I know we all aspire to, the board lifetime achievement award of at least 500 points. I assume this is cumulative. Because that'd be an awful lot of points to get in one, in one year. And, and these are points you get from attending the School Boards Association Conference. Lisa and I have gone to a few things down in Westchester County, you know, speakers, professional development essentially. So, Lisa, kudos to you.
Thank you very much.
It's real time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So, that's my good news.
You have another piece of good news, but it's personal good news. Congratulations on Sean's graduation.
Oh, yes, my son graduated from the University of Georgia this weekend and the nest is now officially empty because he's going to work in Atlanta and not coming back here, so...
Wow.
Diane Stotters.
Yes, Diane.
Oh, congratulations. That's great.
I'm just one down, two to go.
There was like the end of the topic.
All business. Is there another opportunity for public comment? All right, other?
I have one. So, tonight is my last meeting as a member of this body and I will be with you all next week, but that's not a board meeting, it's, you know, the, the annual meeting. And so, I would really like to express my profound gratitude to everyone here as well as the past members of the board that I have served with and to you, Tom, and to you, Joe, and to you, Mary Ann, and to Meg, who was in your spot when I started. This has been probably the most fulfilling experience I have had outside of my family. I, I feel as though I've had the opportunity to really have some impact and make a difference in my community, which I never anticipated having the opportunity to do and I'm, I'm very moved to have been able to do and, and to have done it with you very wonderful people. Really, you have no idea how much this means to me and I really wanna thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lisa, and not only for running for election to the board, but also for being able to step in for an extra year after deciding not to run last year to fill Rick Walker's inspired term after he had to step down. So, thank you very much for your extra year of service.
Thank you.
Any other other?
I have one other. I feel a little guilty bringing it up after, after Lisa's, Lisa's words, but, but I will anyway because sometimes you just have to do what you have to do. And, and that is to ask the board members if they want me to have Mary Ann make reservations for dinner on the night of the board vote. We have done that as, you know, as a, I guess, a fairly recent tradition over the last number of years and, but there's certainly no obligation to have dinner together. But if, if you wanna do that, we'll need, we'll need to know that because we'll need to make reservations. So, you guys wanna do that again this year?
Yes, please.
We'll make the arrangements.
Yes, as long as Lisa can help.
Lisa?
She'll, I want to come.
I'm still officially a member, so after now.
Mark and Steve, would you, would you be interested in, I just don't know how many people to set up for. Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that, Mary Ann, then we'll, we'll get together pre, pre-vote.
All right. Any other items? Okay, lots of action items. I'd like to move that, get something on that. So, may I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of poll inspectors and chairperson, Betty Lou Bounce, Rosemary Hanson, Serene O'Connor, Kathy Caston, Cindy Jano, Jayden Hoffman, Karen Hatter, Howard Mackey, Deb Healy, Dawn Harrington, Sue Waters, Lori Bathrick, Linda Toback, Meredith Berger, Arayne Swack, Betsy Zubroff. With additions, if the district clerk's permission to fill any additional positions as necessary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to maintain the current school staff on schedule as piloted during the 2016-17 school year until and unless modified by the board of education at some future time, making such logistical adjustments as may be deemed necessary and appropriate by the school district administrators to approve its ongoing implementation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the Friday 14 overnight trip to the New York State Gilasid Rowing Association Championships in New York on May 12th through April 2017 at no additional unbudgeted cost to the school district?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Gene Florio to score the 2017 grade four New York State Science Assessments?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Gene Florio to score the 2017 grade four New York State Science Assessments?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the Friday 14 overnight trip to the New York State Gilasid Rowing Association Championships in New York on May 12th through April 2017 at no additional unbudgeted cost to the school district?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a motion on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-substitute non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the appointment of Jean Florio to score the 2017 grade four New York State Science Assessments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional enrichment program advisor substitutes for the Chancellor of Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the appointment of Andrea Istel as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School, effective honor around May 24, 2017, through June 23, 2017, through June 23, 2017, at the pleasure of the board, in accordance with Board Education Policy Number 9410, and the 2016-17 non-직원 salaries. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the absence of Katie Torres, elementary teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the request from Kim Ski for a leave of absence from her position as a teaching assistant, effective honor around May 8, 2017, and, oops.
October 10.
October 10, 2017, pending her appointment as a long-term substitute in the position of special education teacher per action item number 6.11.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-structural staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the appointment of Andrea Istel as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School, effective honor around May 8, 2017, through June 23, 2017, through June 23, 2017, at the pleasure of the board, in accordance with Board Education Policy Number 9410, and the 2016-17 non-직원 salaries. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the absence of Katie Torres, elementary teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the request from Kim Ski for a leave of absence from her position as a teaching assistant, effective honor around May 8, 2017, and, oops.
October 10.
October 10, 2017, pending her appointment as a long-term substitute in the position of special education teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School, effective honor around May 8, 2017, through October 10, 2017, at the pleasure of the board, at the pleasure of the board, in accordance with Board Education Policy Number 9410, and the 2016-17 non-직원 salaries. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the absence of Katie Torres, elementary teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the request from Kim Ski for a leave of absence from her position as a teaching assistant, effective honor around May 8, 2017, and, oops.
October 10.
October 10, 2017, pending her appointment as a long-term substitute in the position of special education teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the request from Kim Ski for a leave of absence from her position as a teaching assistant, effective honor around May 8, 2017, and, oops.
October 10.
October 10, 2017, pending her appointment as a long-term substitute in the position of special education teacher at the Chancellor of Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor. May I have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the list